Call the regular council meeting to order at City Hall, March 5th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Any additions to the agenda this evening?
I would request a five-minute executive session to discuss possible hiring of an officer.
Okay. Any other additions to the agenda?
I'd make one for attorney-client privilege.
How much time? Okay, a five-minute executive session relating to hiring personnel in the police department, a three-minute executive session for attorney-client privilege. Any other additions to the agenda?
Move to.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Brian Sanders, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's five-oh. Consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, February 19th, 2019. With the, uh, on the last page of the minutes, it said abstains. It was actually an opposition, so that is, that word has changed, ten minutes regarding the hire of a fourth officer. So it wasn't someone abstaining, it was opposing, so we just had to change that, so. And then special meeting, February 26th, 2019, appropriation ordinance, three, five, nineteen, and the amount of eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and sixty-six cents. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Brian and Masius, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's five-oh. At this time, I would entertain a motion to recess into executive session for ten minutes to discuss personnel matters related to the police department, to include our police chief, the mayor, the council, Jamie.
So moved.
And it will reconvene at 7:13. Any other discussions? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's five-oh. We will reconvene at 7:13.
Just to stand up.
Call the meeting back to order at 7:13 with no action taken at this time. I'd entertain a motion to go back into executive session for an additional five minutes to reconvene at 7:19. To include what?
Same motion.
Yeah.
So moved.
To include? Who do you want?
All of us and the chief.
All of us and the chief, okay. All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's five-oh. Meeting will reconvene at 7:19.
Miguel Rose.
Call the meeting back to order at 7:19. Okay, well, no action taken at this time. We will move on. We're gonna go to Department Ed Committee Reports, Police Chief Jim Kade.
Real quick, I wanna take one. Just wanted to give you a copy. And I'll explain it real quick.
Thank you, sir.
Last Friday, I had the patrol truck taking in some armies, because we had a severe whine in it. We didn't know if it was a fire steering unit of all, uh, fully or exactly what was going on. We also had a lighting issue with the driver's side headlight kept on going off and on the night before. So I took it over there, they looked at it. The headlights, both of them need to be replaced due to it's getting too hot and melting a connector on it, basically. Right now, it sticks, it's a temporary thing. I've asked officers on nights if they stop somebody for a headlight issue, make sure the headlights working on that vehicle.
Right.
It's four hundred and twenty-seven dollars to get both of those replaced. But then, they called me and said while I was in there, they were hearing a severe whine in the engine. They diagnosed that as a cam and lifter on it, on mechanic. They said it was something, in their opinion, needed to be addressed rather quickly, could go out today, could go out a month. Yeah, no concrete. As you can see, there was a estimate of basically four thousand seven, or four thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty cents, plus four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fourteen cents for the headlights included in that repair bill. That was armies. I decided to try to get the truck into Fishers here locally for a second opinion. Unfortunately, he won't be able to do that until Thursday, but we kind of visited and he said they probably weren't that far off on the repair of it. His cost would be a little bit cheaper because of the hourly rate that he charges compared to armies, but he said he had a similar vehicle in a short period of time ago, same symptoms, and it was discussed and decided to just put a brand-new engine in instead of spending the forty-three hundred, it was about seven thousand to put an engine in it. And that's what that customer ended up doing. He said because once you start tearing into it, it's just an economy where the whole engine craps out, and based off of the year of the vehicle it is. And there again, I didn't notice any, I've been driving it on a regular basis, I didn't notice, I mean, I hear the noise, but it's, I think, a problem with that year of vehicle. I've talked to several people that have had that year of vehicle, either themselves or whatever. It's a, you know, it's a crapshoot what's gonna happen on it. I'm not here to advocate for a new vehicle, obviously, I just wanna let you know that you're looking at another situation. And I attached the estimate for the headlights also on the back. I did go ahead and hold off on spending four hundred and twenty-seven dollars right now just because, there again, I was gonna have Fishers look at that and see, maybe if he can do it cheaper, to save some money. It's entirely up to you guys, what the next step you want to do with it, so. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Jim?
It was probably my vehicle that Fishers put the engine in, and after the noise occurred, I drove it for at least a year, every day, for at least another twenty thousand miles, because I drive one twenty-five to fifty thousand miles a year, and it does cost six thousand. It was a two thousand and six pickup with two hundred and fifty thousand, I put an engine in, so.
Sure. I'm saying wait to see what Fishers say, I mean, if they can go ahead and get the headlight fixed, you know, at a reasonable cost, I just haven't even go ahead and do it.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost is, so I didn't have the sergeant looking into that. And like I said, I know they said that they repaired that passenger side once, and same issue, so, there again, I have no idea, so.
Anything else for Jim?
So I got you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. All right, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to amend the agenda to
Yeah.
Accept resignation letter of the chief of police.
I move with acceptance, but we pay his benefits and everything and pay him through the fourteenth, as we discussed.
Okay.
And accept his resignation effective immediately, but he's paid through the fourteenth.
With everything to be active?
With everything to be added to it.
Second.
Motion and a second. Dorn, Christie, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's five-oh.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to recess the meeting for three minutes. Would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. We'll reconvene at 7:28. All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's?
Just abstaining.
Okay. Call the meeting back to order at 7:28. Okay, moving on, Department Ed and Committee Reports, Grand Administrator Lisa Cornwell.
In the addition little packet that I gave you, um, there's an email from Lisa, just kind of updating you guys on the state runs to school stuff, so that's what I've gotten from her recently.
Can you say anything else about everything else that was on that, painting the lines and all that?
That's all I've gotten from her.
That's all we've gotten so far.
Yeah, and I-
Painting, I think we typically take care of that, crosswalks and stuff, don't you, Jim?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Well, just the lines, I mean, just where they're, we have the measurements to where they go and all that, just can you ask her about that? Like, the lines have to be painted in certain spots. Didn't we agree to accept everything that was on that paper that the state gave us?
You want us to follow that map, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and I'm saying get the right, just get the right measurements to where the lines are painted and just the right spots, so.
Yeah, maybe she's got a little more in-depth on that than what I've done, I just got the map. They're typically-
I know when I helped paint, that they talked about, like, the school, I don't remember, I was painting the wrong things, they said that the school usually does it, but I was doing it anyways.
Well, we used to paint the yellow down there, but I think they do it anymore because of the buses and stuff, but other than that, the crosswalks would be, because I know the one on Fourth Street would be different because it took off, you know, kinda on the edge of Feraldean Yard over here, and there was some changes there.
Yeah, I think it moves it to the other side.
We won't do it, we won't do it until sometime during the summer, you know, so-
I just wanna make sure we get the measurements just right.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna follow, yeah, well, they're normally six foot wide, I'm sure these are not any different, but-
You wanna ask her maybe to-
Six inch stripes, but-
Reach out to them and see if they can get that, I guess?
They surely have a book on that, I assume, so.
Yeah, we haven't really committed a hundred percent to-
Well, we had her-
I mean, I'm just, you know, I mean, we, you know.
We had her check into it, and I guess the signs is the biggest thing.
Signs are about, signs are about nineteen thousand. Now, we can cheapen those up a little bit, some of them, that the signs are the right size, we can put high-reflective film on them, as long as they're the same size as sign that, what they're, whatever they've specified, but it was about nineteen thousand for all the signs, with the flashing lights, all that stuff, so.
Yeah, but all the other signs that they're wanting around the school are free through the K-Dog.
Right.
So, I'm good with supplying the posts and where they need to be, if they're gonna get, if we're gonna get free signs out of it, I don't have an issue with that at all.
Yeah.
You know, and then if we wanna do anything additionally on down the road, we can discuss that when the time comes.
Right.
I mean, I don't think we do any more than probably, well, this even says, I don't think-
The only issue I see with that plan is Fifth Street is closed, the property on the south side of the parking of the school is ours, and technically, the alleyway is a dead end, it's only a utility easement to that pole. So that is not public parking on the north side of our property, it is our property to the center, and there are surveyor stakes there in the property of school, they only have the others, so technically, that alley is not an alley, it's a dead end to the utility pole, because Fifth Street is closed.
No, I wasn't talking about that, though, we're talking on the east side-
You're talking about the east side, yes.
Of the library, where we did that.
But the people that did the survey did not know the property ownership.
But if that's the case, we can have those in by star of the school, you know, depending on what they wanna do, so, that's up to you guys, what you wanna do, we'll do whatever you want.
So what is, just scanning through this, what does Lisa need from us right now?
Nothing, it was just an update.
Okay, okay.
And I think-
I think you're still, I think you're just like-
I think we're far enough out-
Because I forget what we've talked about.
Well, they were wanting to take the stop signs out.
That was recommendations.
At Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Fourth Street.
Like, 'cause she's saying in here, she doesn't even know if they're gonna be on the highway first, so we have time.
And on Broadway.
Like, it's just an update.
Those would have flashing lights, yes, they would.
Right. Okay. Anything else to communicate back to Lisa? Okay, moving on, Fire Chief.
The only thing I have is you guys got a copy of the agreement?
Okay.
Everything looks fine, I'll take it.
Do you need the motion to approve the agreement?
Are we still waiting on the county attorney to review this contract?
Yes.
Yeah, some more for your guys' information than so you have.
It's in a file.
John's looked at it, John made some changes.
These are the changes already, he's already done?
Yes. I believe I gave them the right one. Yes. One, two, and three, yeah, the change.
Yeah.
Well, it looks good to me, so, just the county.
Yeah, we're just waiting for them to get back, and then we'll be able to move forward with that.
I'd just say approve the agreement as is, pending the county's approval.
Yeah, you can do it that way.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I read through it, but I guess.
Oh, you need, you wanna take them to-
You like it?
Okay.
Um, I pretty much-
Wrote it.
Wrote it.
Okay, good, I'm ready.
If you, if you need time for this, okay, well, then I-
Just go ahead, I mean, I-
No, I would, I would like it, everybody to know.
Right, and that, I really wasn't looking for you guys to vote on it.
They just got it done yesterday.
I just got it done, yeah.
Yeah, I'd take it.
So, and I mean, that's perfectly fine, it was just so you guys had a copy of it.
It'll be on the agenda next week.
It does say fifty-fifty on maintenance, and I don't know if it's fifty-fifty, it's fair, whether it should be, counties should be higher. I just left that up to you guys.
I would say again, to review it, and we'll revisit it next meeting. Table it till the next meeting, if you guys are okay with that, so everybody has a chance to review it. I didn't, didn't know that you hadn't had a chance to review it, right?
No, like I said, I just got it to Jamie this morning, so that they actually could-
Anything else for Chief? Okay. City Clerk Jamie.
Um, I just got back from vacation last night, I'll be leaving next week for clerk conference, I'll be leaving Tuesday, be gone Wednesday, Thursday, and back Friday, half of Friday, I think, so I'll be in Manhattan for that, for my clerk certificate. Um, we released the Jubilee theme, it's gonna be "Live It Up," we're still looking for sponsors. Um, we changed it into packages this year, so, um, there's different levels, and we're offering, like, for each level, there's different things that-
Incentives.
Yeah, incentives that the sponsors get in return as well, so, um, that's open to people and businesses, so it's not just businesses, it takes everyone. I'm always looking for volunteers, if you guys want to volunteer your time, with anything coming up.
You will be, and we know you will be.
Um, the city cam while I was gone, I think, closed from twelve-thirty to one-thirty, um, those are just gonna be the normal hours, and I think that's been going pretty well. Um, we'll see, I guess, when it comes to get down to the fifteenth and how all that works, and, I mean, we're flexible, so if we run into an issue, we'll work around it and make sure everyone's taken care of, so, I think that's it.
I appreciated the sign on the door, but-
Yeah, we just figured that would be better than trying to remember a lunch sign every day.
So people can, you know, and if, you know, if they need to make their payment, of course, how they can do all that stuff, and-
Yeah, I'm trying to educate through Facebook a little bit on all the different options that they have in utilizing the PSN and going paperless, because it, especially with going down to two people here in the office, the more people that sign up on paperless, that's taking away some of the time that we spend with filling and stuffing and sending, so.
Sure.
I think that's it for now.
Anything for Jamie at this time?
Oh, I believe we will get our audit delivery next meeting, so, just to prepare you for that.
Okay. Anything else for Jamie? Okay, City Superintendent Jeff.
The only thing I have at this time is that some of you, most of you probably realize we did some plowing on Sunday, uh, not really because of the depth of the snow, but the wind and the drifting. Uh, we didn't ask people to move their vehicles for the snow routes, we just kinda worked around them and went on, but during the course of the morning, we did have an accident. It was not my driver's fault, uh, the other party did not have a clear windshield, and he was, and my guy was all but stopped, and he ran into the side of the truck on the right rear wheel. He did not hurt the truck, it put a little bit of wrinkling in the guy's bumper, and he got a ticket for obstructed view, so, uh, just something you probably should know about, because there was a, there was a report taken, so, anyway, nobody hurt, uh, guy had a hole in his windshield, about yea-bear around, that he was looking at it, so. Anyway, big orange dump truck, I mean, you know, it's kinda hard to miss, lights on, sure, backup alarm, the whole smear, but, anyway, regardless, he smacked the side of it, so, but everybody's okay.
No damage?
No damage, no. Little bit of damage on the pickup, you know, I, Jim wouldn't know, probably less than five hundred dollars, I'm sure, but, but regardless, the report was taken, and the other person was issued a citation, so. But, other than that, we got along good, um, a few little quirks with the loader on the heater and some stuff like that, but nothing that we didn't take care of Monday, so, other than that, everything went fine, so.
Okay. Anything else for Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff, it's come to my attention that some of your men may not have CDLs.
We've discussed that, uh, and at this point in time, until I know from the trooper, I'm not gonna say yea or nay, I've heard that, that they are not necessarily under the DOT regulations, but I will find out from the trooper before we go any farther.
Right.
If, if it does turn out that, I have, I have five trucks altogether that have air brakes and weigh over ten thousand pounds, and I do have three guys that do not have a Class B. Um, I'm gonna talk to, to Trooper Chave and see where we go from here. I know that as far as DOT numbers, we're not under that regulation, but as far as being able to operate those vehicles in town in the close perimeter, I do not know. If, if it turns out that the guys have to have them, I would like for the council to help pay for getting them done, we will educate them here, we've, we've set up a deal, one of the other guys and I, to, to instruct them and teach them to go through this, this CDL handbook, so that they're ready to go take the test when the time comes. Somebody will have to go with them and take a truck up, uh, you know, the closest we can probably go would be Dodge City, either Dodge City or Hayes, I think, probably, so, I'll, I'll stay in touch with you on that as we learn a little bit more.
I don't think it'd be covered by federal motor carrier, but it may be covered by state motor carrier, just states more restrictive.
Yeah, so, let me-
I don't know all types of how to look at it, so I don't know if that's changed.
Let me talk to the trooper, and we'll go from there, but if they're required, and the other thing was, a couple of weeks ago, we were gonna have to go, Jamie and I met with the insurance guy from KMIT, and he suggested that we start a-
Drug testing?
Drug testing program with all of our guys, and being it's how they carry, if they carry a CDL, they really should have one anyway. Uh, the only other question being on that deal is that if, if they do require these other guys to have a CDL, if the, if the city wants to require that they carry a health card, uh, health cards are good for two years, they require a physical over two years, they're fairly expensive, so, uh, that would be a choice that you would have to make, you know, if they were out on the road seven days a week, it'd be a little different than a day here, you know, but that's strictly up to you, how you wanna do it. I did carry one for years, I don't now, but only because really, we don't, we haven't ever required one, so, that would be council's choice.
I would, I had talked to Jeff about it, and I'd said, you know, if we essentially have to require those guys to get a CDL, you know, that wasn't in terms of their employment, so, help them get it the first go-round, and then they'd be, you know, responsible thereafter when they renew and all that.
And also, when we hire new, that we would require them to have at least a Class B, so.
CDL employees-
Fifty-four and over, ten, tractor-trailer, we're just required, you know, to have air brakes, air brakes, yeah, because ours weigh over ten thousand and under fifty-four.
CDL employees are very valuable to other employers.
Right. Yeah, it just comes down to whether they have to have it or not, but I was just thinking, if, if we don't have to have our guys have a B license to make sure our insurance does cover them, you know, this could have been a pretty bad wreck, and these guys don't have the proper license.
And, and that's what I told them, and that's probably what brought the discussion to worse, was the fact was that, that maybe, and I'm not going to fault Jim, he might've missed it, it was really cold, they stayed out just a short amount of time, crawled into pickup, took care of their business, and got back out, but if it had been the trooper, it might've been a different story. So, you know, if it had been me, it was no big deal, I carry a Class A, I didn't have for years, but, but two of these guys that ran my trucks, one of them did not have a CDL, so, anyway. I'll check with him, and I'll report back to you next meeting, and we'll go from there, if that's all right?
Great.
Okay?
Thanks, Jeff.
I got one more deal, Jeff, on, uh, when you bought that new pickup last year, did you ever look at that, look up the incentive about trading it in each year?
Goes in in May, sometime, he'll let us know, is what David told me, David contacted him after you asked him last time, it's sometime in May.
Okay, he'll reach out to us?
He'll let us know, yeah, sure will.
Also, Jeff, I was given this list that was handed out to council from the WIT Center-
Yes.
-regarding all the things that they would like to have done.
Yes.
Council, um, if you had to take a chance to look at it real quick, here's some of the things that Sandy Smith and-
Dawn.
Dawn Seaver, thank you, have brought to us, this is something that they'd like to see get done as quickly as possible.
I would say most of these have been mentioned and brought for the council before, since the time that Corey was here.
Yeah.
So this is not new.
It's, it's hard to take care of a lot of that stuff on that list with nine hundred dollars in the account.
Exactly right.
Well, and actually, we, it's, I looked it up from 2018, and I don't know the, like, beginning of time contracts and agreements, but I would really, I was trying to search today, and I just found the, like, rules of the senior center, why, and, and the agreement for the actual, um, CDs, and in the agreement of the CD, the interest of the fifty thousand dollar CD is to be used for maintenance, painting, and what, there's three things, and that interest off of the fifty thousand dollar CD for 2018 was five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
That's why I said it's really hard to do.
So while, while I understand, like, I must, this is total assumption, 'cause I wasn't here, you know, this building was given to the city, and this, you know, this was how many years ago, costs have inflated, they're, they're there for free, the rec center's there for free, like, I just don't understand the first, like, while I'm not saying the city can't help and be a, like, I just don't understand, they're getting state funds, I don't feel, I would like to see the original documents stating that we're liable for a hundred percent of every, you know what I mean? Like, I just don't understand.
Is it a memorial?
Is it a, was it fallen to a memorial, as it's a donation?
The Gateway Memorial Fund, the CD was, but the agreement with the, but it was just the, but I don't know with the building, I haven't been able to find anything with the building, it's my-
So as far as what the, I mean, 'cause it's, it's a city-owned building.
Correct.
In the past-
We would be responsible for taking care of our building.
In the past, we've taken money out of different budgets at the city to help repair a lot of that stuff, because the money wasn't there. Uh, here a while back, I purchased eight or ten fixtures, I think, for the senior center and put them in, out of the electric department, because the money wasn't there, along with, you know, a dozen, out on the skate rink floor and some in the front. We did not replace all of them, I mean, we replaced some, but, uh, Jamie's right, I mean, when I go to look in there at the budget to take money out for repairs, there's just nothing there, you know?
So out of that account, you have been using it in the previous years, or do you-
We use what there is, but this just doesn't go very far, you know?
So you've used it all up?
Yeah, I mean, even if we have a bathroom heater go bad or whatever, it'll take half of that money just that quick, you know?
When Corey was here, I think the grand total to replace the carpet around the outside and the carpet in the main part, new ceiling tiles and light fixtures. and the carpet in the main part, new ceiling tiles and light fixtures was close to $30,000.
$28,000. Yes, it was. Cause I helped him figure it out.
Would it, because we were like, there's no way, I mean, take-
But the thing, yeah, I mean, the thing is, we can't do it off $500. But it, and I wouldn't be opposed to fixing all this if we got like off, got, we got rent money and could save it up and then put it back into the people that are renting.
The northwest corner of the building that she's talking about is the settling of the building. I mean, the corner is said-
It's been like that for years.
You can see it just plain as life, you know? I mean, the whole building's old.
I don't know if there's an original agreement or if we need to go forward to someone.
I think the building was donated by them to the city.
It was.
To be used as a senior center.
And a skating rink.
A community center.
Community center.
Community center.
Yeah.
So-
And we were told years ago that it was a lot of money there. No.
Well, the budget ref, like, I think-
All we can spend is the interest off of the CD.
I understand that, but I, it was more than $500.
Well, yeah, but we've spent money out of it every year. That, that's just the interest off the CD.
The interest is $500. It's a $50,000 CD.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I'm saying it was more than that.
I don't know, I don't know if it was budgeted properly because I know that-
Maybe we were missing form.
Well, I don't know if it was written on the budget properly.
What are, what are you saying, Ron?
I'm saying there, the interest off the CD, which I don't know how this is right, we were told when I first got on council, $13,000.
Yeah, there's no, there's never been that much.
Oh, no. It's only ever been a $50,000 CD.
I didn't know how much it was.
Interest rates have never been that high.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm sure it was.
Well, and I don't know, I don't know if the budget reflects it properly because I think it was Marlene came in here and we were, I was trying to explain to her that there's really not that much money in there.
Maybe I missed, I missed the first one. I would certainly say-
I have to go back and look at the budget before I-
You know, I, I don't know what kind of grants or things that are out there that are available for maybe community centers or wellness centers or something like that.
I can tell you, you're better off to probably just start over rather than tie into that building.
Yeah.
When you have foundation issues and stuff settling.
Yeah.
You'd be better off to level it and start brand new. Because I don't think you can afford to put the money into it to fix the settling of the building. I mean, that's a full brick building, isn't it?
Full tile, tile and, tile and block, yeah.
Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt to look, like, go send into a grant to fix up the building though. It wouldn't hurt to look into it.
Most of them weren't probably gonna allow you to fix it. They're probably for the construction.
It wouldn't hurt to look into it.
I'm, if you wanna look into it, that's fine.
Because something you gotta keep in mind is that building hasn't changed since I was a kid. Nobody's fixed anything in there. If we keep it up like the way we've been doing, which is nothing, we're not gonna have anything.
When you have nothing to fix something, that's what you get is nothing.
Well, if, if we don't get a grant for it, then we should at least look into charging rent and saving that money up.
And that's what I don't know is, you know, like, I don't know where the original agreements are with two entities being there for free.
Well, and, and those, those, those entities have a budget. They have monies that they get. I don't see where, where they couldn't be contributing a little bit to, to the cause where they pay no rent and you do all this.
My, my thing is, is we have a bus that gets used by the rec center and the senior center. We pay the utilities on that building. We pay the insurance on that building.
Wait, the union contract?
I mean, there is a lot of stuff that the city already pays for.
Right.
Not even touching the money that's drawn off the, the CD's interest.
Right.
I mean-
The rec commission in there?
Yes.
And they have a taxpayer-funded budget that is under scrutiny, for lack of a better term.
I mean, I, I just think that there's-
I think it should come out, maybe rent or something else.
If it's not a grant, we should at least look into charging rent and then we can start fixing up these things that they're complaining about.
I don't think you're gonna fix up a structure for the himself building.
Probably not. I mean, I, some of the stuff you can probably-
I haven't looked at that close.
Yeah, I mean, paint-
I haven't looked at it either.
Yeah. Maybe it's something we need to get the school involved. Maybe the school wants to help paint the building on the inside. Kids have workdays.
It needs the outside as bad as the inside.
You know?
Right.
There is some stuff that can be done.
So maybe we could, maybe we could start with that, with things that they think the school workday could help and they could fill out a request form for that and see what they can get done.
Yeah. I, I don't see a problem with asking, uh, Lisa to look for some grants. Nothing ventured, nothing gained. If there is something out there, let's take advantage of it. You know, if there's something-
Worth exploring.
It's worth exploring, exactly. So.
But you also gotta understand if it's not a, a very good grant, if it's a 50/50 match grant and it's gonna cost 40,000 to do it, you gotta come up with $20,000.
Well, yeah, that's, that's the thing. But you never know what we're gonna find until we look for it. So, I mean, if we don't like what we find, then the heck with it. We don't take it. So, yeah.
And I'm fine with having her look at it. I don't have an issue with that.
This is a perfect instance of Band-Aids. Band-Aids, Band-Aids and more Band-Aids and not looking out there in the future and planning. And I think it's one of those things that we're working towards to not be responsive, but proactive on some things and plan. And this is one of those things that needs to be done. Former mayor, Stymates, you know, his, his biggest thing, he always advocated for the kids. And he said, the only things kids have to do in this town is the skating rink and the swimming pool. And both of those facilities are going to shit. For lack of a better, I don't care if I'm on TV or not. The people in this town need to take care of their kids and they need to pay for it and we need to take care of it. And, because there is nothing else for them to do. And we need to take care of it. So we've got a plan. We gotta figure out ways. We gotta get creative, uh, and come up with, with something. You know, I mean, it's just-
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got, we gotta do something about it because the, the kids need stuff to do.
So whether we take a grant or start charging rent, we're big or something.
Right. I'm just not, I'm just not gonna-
Need to explore the options.
I'm not gonna make another department use their funds that they have budgeted for to fix other stuff that-
I agree.
Isn't within their realm. I mean, it's not right, Jeff, spending electric department money to fix something that he has absolutely nothing to do with.
Right.
I mean, we feel the same way you guys do. And that's the reason we do it, you know, because we figure we can take a little here and there and help it. I mean, the ceiling tiles falling. I mean, and, and you're exactly right. The building's not hardly ever been touched since the day that it was done, which was about 85 or 86, I think.
I couldn't, I tried to find like a building, I couldn't-
My wife and I were running the skating rink when we moved in out there. And it was in the, it was in the early to mid eighties because we started out here on Fourth Street and Hermy coming out there. And that's how that started, was him coming out and watching the kids skate, wanting to do something different. They took, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars and put into that building at that time. So, it's been, it's been close to four, it's been 40 years ago.
Well, it's something that maybe even, um, getting the community involved in, um, a, a project, whether it's fixing this building or looking for an alternative location or doing something, um, you know? I know, I know people are always going around asking people to give, 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 give. But again, this is a, this is a really good cause in the respect that it's something for our kids. I don't know.
I'll even volunteer to make a thermometer for whoever wants to volunteer to do it.
But I mean, it, I mean, there's, there's multiple, there, I mean, I'm just saying there are a lot of avenues that could be explored. So, I mean, I just keep, I would say keep an open mind and, and think outside the box a little bit. What can we do to fix this situation?
So for starters, is it consensus to let Lisa look into it first?
I'm fine with that.
That's fine.
Nothing lost, nothing gained.
Exactly. Right. We could even, I mean, talk to Sandy and, uh, Dawn and maybe they can come, I mean, fill out a form for the, uh, community service day at the school. Yep.
Would you like to do that or would you like me to reach out?
I'll go talk to them.
Okay.
I'll go talk to them tomorrow.
Now, the air conditioner over there, you know, it seems like we work on that thing about twice a year.
Yeah.
Be on the west side in the sunlight and the sand and the-
And we end up paying for that out of somebody else's budget because the budget's not there to pay for it even, you know, for building maintenance. So.
I guess I didn't realize that low.
It's a death trap deal. It really is.
There's more things to think about.
Is it Dylan's, Anex's building?
Maybe that was what they, was spent.
Dylan's building may be more feasible to use than that one structurally.
Structurally, yeah.
Structurally better. It's not as big. Not as big, no. I didn't know square footage. I mean, as far as skating rink floor goes, it's not as big.
Yeah. Anything else on this topic?
Close in again.
I'd say we-
Put a title on it.
We're off tonight.
Okay, moving on. City Attorney John Beverlin.
Uh, just that dumpster resolution you had to get to.
Okay. Anything else for John at this time?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on. Nothing from me. I've already brought my stuff to you. Um, moving on to old business-related party questionnaire.
Okay, you need a little extra handout. You guys got a form I need you to fill out and turn back in to me. Um, it has to do with, if you haven't filled one out, if you own a business or are part of a business that the city does business with, it needs to be listed on this, just stating that you have interactions with a different entity, right?
Yeah, sometimes, I know with, when, um, Davis Electric in the past, you can't get, you have to fill these out before you guys come around like a bag or something.
Right.
Um, but it's not long time.
Basically, yeah. Basically, if the police department gets new tires from Marshalls.
You're just making a disclosure so that-
Right.
Nobody can accuse you of coming.
And I just need you guys that do have something, if anything is ever paid out to your business or your interested, yeah. I just need you to abstain from that specific invoice. And I'll have to reflect that in a minute. So I'll try to pay attention, but I want you guys aware of it so you can help me pay attention and we're abiding by what needs done. So.
Fair enough.
That was all that. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business dumpster resolution.
The number on that is 2019 dash zero two, by the way.
Twenty nineteen dash oh two. I entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second on the table to approve resolution 2019 dash oh two. Any other discussion? Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Mark.
Shut my phone off for a week.
Sandra's second.
All in favor?
Yep.
All opposed? Carrie's five oh. Thanks, John, for putting that together.
I will tell you on the end of that note, we do have a dumpster back. We're having signs made, uh, four by eight and a couple of new cameras. So, we're gonna watch it and see how it goes. So.
Just to clarify, you want that on the next bill, right?
As soon as it takes effect, takes effect, yeah. Um, so I guess I would, I would just state that, uh, this resolution is, uh, adopted today and it's, it's, uh, the $1 dumpster fee for residents reflected on the utility bills.
I just didn't know what you were in your cycle.
But that way, at least, uh, for the record, people know that that's what was done with that resolution number.
I don't know where we just saved them what kind of money on electricity too.
Well, okay, I'm gonna, the fifteenth, I might wait until-
You do it when it's convenient.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say-
Works best for the city office.
Once it works best with the, the cycle.
Cause we'll read bills the fifteenth. I guess I can add it on. Cause it's been there the whole.
Whatever works for you.
I'll figure it out.
We'll see it when you get it there.
That is a fact.
Okay. Okay, moving on, uh, new business review, the police report from 2012.
I sent you guys the report that you had asked for. Um, I believe that you guys had enough time to look at it. I have taken it upon myself to try to get you a little bit more information. Um, at this time, with everything going on, I, I don't mean to overstep, but I feel like this is a good opportunity to, um, find a good direction, get some answers on what our expectations are moving forward. Um, it's been a very eventful year and I feel like if we just kind of cut and dry with everything going on, you know, there's been a lot of talk with the fourth officer, not the fourth officer, and no one has come to me, well, Jim came to me, well, while I was gone, I guess. But, you know, we haven't talked about money. And I keep stressing that, that just because it's in the budget does not mean the funds are there. The police department is not, I don't know if I'm explaining this right. I don't believe the police department is part of the tax, the tax levy that they put, or the tax levy that they put on. Like, our budget is maximized. So, just because the money is saying that it is there in the budget does not mean that we have the funds to support it. So, I have taken it upon myself to show you guys what I could find. 2016 is a little bit iffy. Um, back in 2000 and whenever this was talked about, but like, I'm ready for an answer. We've talked about it too many times. I feel like it needs to be laid out and it needs to be followed. Like, there's, it, it doesn't need to continue to be discussed. I mean, we need an answer. Cause it's been too long of too much back and forth.
Well, it's, it's causing, essentially what happened tonight is a portion of what was the reasoning too. So, I mean, there's just a lot of factors that go into it and just a lot of things that need to be considered. Number one, money, yes.
To effectively go forward, we need to get it figured out. And I'm, I've tried to put together as much as I can. Um, so I'll just give you guys, I get, I had planned on updating you guys for everyone's. Um, I have here, I have 16, 17 and 18 and a little bit of projected 19. But then I got very happy and just printed out the current year-to-date payroll expenses for the police department. So, as of 2019, this is what's been spent. Just for your information, just for your research that you guys have been working on, it is what I've taken upon myself to try to get for you.
Summarizing, you're saying that while the city budgets for four officers, you can't afford four officers?
Well, essentially, the, what we had talked about today was, you know, the, the whole weak budget for four officers isn't completely accurate. We just, they have a budget for a department.
That's supposed to-
That, that could maybe support four.
Right.
Uh, but that's not entirely true where the money itself is. But what council needs to do is, is make that decision. Uh, and primarily how you make that decision is go, how, how much time do you want these guys on your streets?
Well, the, and they also, the other problem is in the budget, like, if you're looking at the budget in the general fund under the police department, we're budgeting for four officers. But when you, 1012 is for the police department, but that doesn't have in employee benefits. So these totals have in employee benefits as well.
Included.
Included in the totals that I gave you.
When we looked at the numbers just briefly before here, January and February, if you annualize it just for the current department like it is, you're already 180,000 for what we've done from January 1 through February, 180,000.
Well, it include this pay period though too, I think.
Did it include?
I think, I think it would have five pay periods.
It went to three, five.
Three, five. So you paid-
Five pay periods. Five out of the 24 pay periods.
Okay. So that would, what, what would you annualize that to? How many pay periods are included in, in your year and?
We have 24 pay periods and that was five out of the 24.
Five out of the 24. So, you're still almost six, six times. So, you're still, still at 175 or 80,000 if you're annualizing it. So you, even with the minimal department that we supposedly have, we're still using up most of our budget. If you look at Pelosi's review, one thing he stated in there after he stated- If you look at Pelosi's review, one thing he stated in there, after he stated four people and everything, he said, there are very few cities of this size that have twenty-four hour police protection. It was not one of his recommendations that we have twenty-four hour. He said, it's not commonly found in a city this size to have twenty-four hour police protection.
Right. Marshall, you may be able to speak, Mark, you guys may be able to speak to this when this was done or, or when more of this conversation has been had in the past. When they reviewed this study and, and accepted the fourth officer position again, they then implemented, we want twenty-four seven on the street coverage. So essentially, you made the people of the town happy with, oh, we've got four officers now, but you added another shift. The four officers would have relieved the shifts that were currently had. So essentially, you needed an additional offer, officer to do the twenty-four seven, which would have been five. And that's what was snuck in the back door, but it pacified the community because they didn't understand what was being done. So essentially, it was, it, it was not a very good deal that was done, in my opinion. I quite honestly don't think we need twenty-four seven on the street. We haven't had twenty-four seven on the street for quite some time now because we've been through staffing issues.
Even when we had four officers, it didn't last all that long.
Right, and, and standby, you know, we have the standby and on-call and things, so, you know, I, there's no need for the twenty-four seven.
I'm just providing this for you guys, for your research, so you can continue looking in, especially with going forward, we're gonna have to be hiring and they're gonna have to build their department. So I would just suggest us continuing to do our own research and figuring out what we want to go forward.
It's, in the past, if even Chief Saylor had said that the twenty-four hour coverage was nearly impossible for us
Correct.
to do here, you know, and a lot of people understood that. I think that they understood that we were never gonna get twenty-four seven coverage, so.
Well, and again.
I'm just trying to provide facts, so misinformation's not being misconstrued and it's across the board.
Jamie, what would be your total, what's budgeted annually for the police department?
Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-seven.
That's the whole budget for nineteen.
That's the entire budget, but that doesn't include benefits.
Does the benefits come out of the wages that are on there? Does not include. The budget for twenty eighteen was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, the budget for twenty nineteen is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Not cause that.
Subtract that vehicles and stuff like that and then subtract out.
If you pay four officers and a part-time, like I was imagining we probably would if we hired four people, a fourth officer, I roughly have it figured that you're gonna pay a hundred and seventy thousand without benefits for four officers and a part-time. And by the time you take out the rest, if they stay per line item budget, per line item, they don't, not a penny over, at the end of the year, you've used everything but seventy-two hundred dollars out of that budget. The fifteen thousand that is scheduled for transfer is not included in that. So there is no transferring into capital outlay projects, vehicles.
Sure.
But you said that's if they stick to their line item.
That is if they don't go over a single line item, budgeted line item on the budget.
And how much did they go over last year, all, with all the line items?
If, if they'd had four officers last year, we would've been in a world of hurt. I will guarantee you that.
I'm just providing you guys, like, if.
My, my suggestion, merely mine, my opinion, if you take that fourth officer away and hire a part-time, you can pay two part-time people and save, go from seven thousand dollars left in your budget at the end of the year to about twenty-nine thousand dollars, roughly, twenty-nine to thirty thousand.
Three full and two part?
Yes. I do know that I have spoke with Stafford for the last six years, they've been a four-man department, and in the last six years, they've never been able to keep four officers hired.
I think everywhere's very low.
They've made it work with three and a part-time. As of right now, it is two and a part-time. And they're making it work with two and a part-time. It is tough, they are pulling extra hours, there are some days that there's no presence at all. Whoever's on call for that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they make four trips around town, spend about an hour, so they're out for four hours that day and that's it.
What are the incidents for Capida in crime, speeding tickets, rapes, murders, whatever, in Maxville, Stafford, St. John versus the county as an average? Cause Maxville has two city employees that drive their old Crown Victoria and their own city pickup that they work out of every day, and I bet there's not a difference in the crime statistics of any of the three communities. And they have city employees that act as sheriff's deputies that they drop their shovel if they have to make the call, they go do it.
That, yeah, no.
Here's the thing, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to having three police officers.
You're not gonna do it?
No.
Because I don't wanna burn anybody out, and I think our budget can handle three people full-time. I think our budget can also afford to pay part-time people. I also sat down and worked a rotating schedule for three months with three full-time people, allowing everybody two days a week off. Everybody works an eight-hour shift on Friday. It can be done, there's ways out there to make it work. And that was, that was not using the part-time person scheduled in at all.
Sure.
So, I mean, if you have two, I think you can make it work. It's gonna take some time to get it lined out, but, I mean, budget-wise, I mean, if you guys wanna raise the mill levy and, and put it on the taxpayers, I for one won't vote for it.
I won't vote for raising the utility rate, putting it on the rate figures.
I, I called around to different cities comparable to St. John's population and to see how many officers they had, full-time officers, and what kind of coverage they had. Called the Inman, they had three officers and a part-time officer. And they said they stay out till one o'clock on, on the streets. Bueller, they said the population's the same there. By that can hardly believe, but they have three officers and cover, and a part-time officer that cover twenty-four seven. LaCrosse, the county does it. They expired their contract with the county, it was too expensive, and the county just comes through, which, that city was the same way, expired their contract with the county, they come through. I don't want that for St. John, but I do think that three officers and a part-time officer will make it work. There's other towns that are our same size, make it work. You know, I, I'm not saying twenty-four hour coverage, I don't think we need that.
That's, that's the consensus I want tonight, is do you want twenty-four seven on the street or not?
Sergeant Elliott, opinion?
It's kinda tough, I mean, to get plenty of days off, I mean, yeah, what Marshall's saying there with three, three guys and part-timers, you'll get your adequate days off, but four guys makes it easy. I mean, it's just, however you guys wanna do it, I mean, I'm here.
I can tell you, four, four guys and a part-time guy will not work with our budget.
Where are you coming up with the part-time with the four guys? I'm lost, where you threw that into the.
Well, when I, when I started back in April, I believe we were four and a part-time.
That is what it is always. I'm telling you, four guys and a part-time, and even at part-time, you're still not, even if you get rid of that position, you are still probably gonna be in about the same boat of the trip, because a part-time guy does not take that much from your budget. I mean, ten to thirteen thousand, roughly.
We saved, if we got two part-time guys to make up the fourth guy, if we saved benefits as well, the benefit, which we saved that.
None of these figures covered the benefits.
Right, and there are guys out there that are looking to pick up some shifts.
And our, I mean, our benefits did go down because not everyone has insurance, but that's not saying that.
But if you hire.
Someone else back in that needs them.
Someone else back in that needs, you know, a family of six. You're gonna offer them the same benefits you offer the rest of the employees.
Sure, sure.
Bill, what, what, what has been the coverage since you've been on since part-time?
Since I've been on, when I started in October is part-time. I mean, it's always been twelve-hour shifts, four P.M., four A.M. to four P.M., four P. to four A. And only work eight hours of that shift and then the rest of it's on-call time. And it's been that way since I've been here.
So what's happened in LaCrosse and this city? When they just say.
You know, I, that's why I asked, I just assumed they had, they had a city police department. I looked up the population, that's pretty close, I'll call them, so, called them, I said they, they expired the contract.
They've got a two-A school, much larger than ours, major highway, two major highways in this city go through town. They've got a lot of industry in this city and they're getting by without.
I mean, I, I think we should still have a police department, Jim, I just, you know, that's just comparable to. Well, and your county's not gonna.
Well, let's not, we need to make a consensus on that, that, I don't need stuff stirring up, we will have a police department.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about no, so.
So are of us agreeing that we need a police department, okay?
No, I, I agree a hundred percent, I mean, I, I just think that there's no such reason or any reason why we need to have twenty-four seven patrolling. You have someone that's on-call, the county does not patrol twenty-four seven.
Right. Do you agree?
We also have a, you know, even if you're not on twenty-four seven, we also have sheriff's deputy in town, a state private trooper, well, he's not that anymore, but, you know, in-town that we're not totally.
Our calls are dispatched through the county, I don't know, I don't know how that ends up working.
I mean, really, Bill, I mean, it's all, it's almost twenty-four coverage. If you're saying we're basically going from four A.M. to one A.M., you said, right?
No, we're going from four A.M. to four P.M., four P.M. to four A. But we're only working, you're on the streets for eight hours.
And they're on-call for four hours.
So there's eight hours a day that's on-call time.
Okay.
Sixteen hours to you guys on the, yeah.
I don't think we need twenty-four coverage.
Twenty-four on-call coverage, but not twenty-four on-the-street coverage.
Do we even have to have twenty-four on-call coverage?
I don't even know if you need twenty-four on-call coverage.
Yeah. Because if you don't, you're paying, I mean, no, I.
I think sheriff will start sending you a bill.
No, you need, someone needs to be on-call if they're not out patrolling.
I agree with that.
And you don't think we can go city-county cooperation and cover it with an on-call?
No, no.
Yeah, cause then they, the other municipalities will want the same deal.
So what is it exactly that we're all gonna have a consensus on?
That we are twenty-four seven on-call coverage, so we have a guy working an eight-hour shift, another guy working his eight-hour shift.
There's no twenty-four seven patrolling.
Right, there's no twenty-four seven patrolling, but we will have our guys work their eight-hour shifts with their four hours on-call.
If he, if they wanna come out and work the last eight hours of their twelve-hour shift instead of the first eight hours, I don't really care.
Right, that comes down to the department head and they can.
You know, if it's a Friday night and they feel that they need to be out for the last eight hours instead of the first eight.
Which is what the former chief had done, he said, come out within your twelve hours.
I don't really care.
And which was good, cause you could shake it up, on a Tuesday night, you come out, work four to midnight, or you can work, you know.
To me, that is, as far as I'm concerned, if we're gonna do anything, three and two part-time is, is where I would lean, just due to the simple fact of the budget. I mean, it comes boiling down to money.
Which, again, where I look.
Yeah, that, yeah, that always boils down to money. You okay with that, Ryan?
Three officers and two part-timers.
I don't know how, how easy or how hard it is to get a part-time. The thing is, is if you don't get a part-time, I still think you can make it work with the one part-time you have.
Sure.
You might get overtime, you might have to work overtime. That is a factor in every, every job in the world. There's a chance that you're gonna have to pull an extra shift and work overtime. I'm fine with that, we've built in overtime pay.
Yeah, I just, I just don't wanna see that. I, my issue when I was talking about the twenty-four seven on-the-street coverage and three guys and whatever, I was going, you're, you're, what we've been doing is burning them out.
Theoretically, you can do that with four full-time people.
Right, and that's what we had done, that's what they did to them, is they burned them out. They added an extra shift while adding the four, and it screwed everything up. And nobody understood that out here, they just all rah-rahed, we got four.
I can tell you guys one thing, we had a fire call at twelve o'clock last night, strictly volunteers. From the time it was paged out to the time we responded was less than five minutes. I'm pretty sure they can get around in five minutes or less to respond to a call.
Sure, which has worked in the past.
It's been five to seven minutes most generally, if it's, if it's a, if it's a dire emergency, yeah, it's a lot quicker.
Right. But I mean, as volunteer firefighters, we responded to the call last night, and within five minutes, we were pulling out of the station, headed to the scene. So, I mean, five minutes.
But you just need to make sure we get on-call, on, on-the-street coverage, sorry.
Yeah.
During school hours, you know, we need to make.
Well, the school's a number one priority, I mean, it's been that way for me ever since I started.
Well, Bill, I'll put you on the spot a little bit, okay? When you throw in your vacation time, sick time, your training time, administration time, lunch time, and you've been doing some scheduling with Jim before, throwing all that in there, do you, do you think you can make it work, three guys in one part-time?
Probably good, yeah.
Here's the thing, the other thing, just like Stafford, there may be a day, a Sunday, that everybody's, and whoever's scheduled for that day, you say, you know what, work four hours today? Pick four times today and go out and patrol for an hour, drive around, have your presence known.
Well, when I was, when I was by myself, that's, Sundays would typically be the day.
There is nothing wrong, I mean.
And I would just come out sporadically.
From eight o'clock to noon, most of your people are going to church. Not a whole lot going on in St. John, Kansas on a Sunday morning. Most time, there ain't a whole lot going on on a Sunday afternoon. There's ways around working with that, you know, that you could do.
Well, having, having a good communication with our dispatch center and the sheriffs and, and their understanding of what our department is too, really helps out a lot when they have to help us and respond and help out, so I've been, I've, I've been in that situation firsthand.
But like I said, instead of working an eight-hour shift that day, it's a four-hour shift.
Right.
Whatever they have to do to make it work, as long as we have somebody on-call is the biggest thing, that we need to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, take twelve, eight hours on-call instead of four. I think it can be worked around and I think it will, I would feel a whole lot comfortable having thirty thousand left in a budget at the end of the year than seven thousand. I don't know how close you guys like to.
Or not having it at all, you know, not having any, or going over.
Right, that's what I'm saying, you know, I mean, when it comes down to dollars and cents, that's the biggest thing. You can either raise taxes, health pay for everything, or you can make do with what you can actually afford to do. You know, we, we cut budgets the last two years because the city's not in the, I'm not saying we're in a bind, but we had to cut budgets and transfers just to make things work.
If you're gonna do this, your chief or your officers, and I don't know that you truly need a chief, to say, everybody has to pull the same shift.
Everybody has, you have to work the same shift to some type.
And Jamie ends up in a, in a bind because everybody's coming in here bitching about the police department, and Jamie and her staff hears it all and they're in a bind with no control. Either they have to have some control over it, where there's somebody there, because they're in a really uncomfortable position. Cause she's not really in a management position and there was a lot of BS going on between the chief and officers, et cetera, that was always happening in here. So everybody needs to get on the same page.
I agree, I agree.
And Jamie and Pam do a good job, I, maybe they need a little more stick in this game of control, because the mayor's gone and there's nobody controlling, nobody's in control of the Indians. And the previous two chiefs were pulling their.
It's, it's gotta be, I understand that the chief has a job to do. There are some times that he has to do daily stuff. Part of that is delegation, you have a sergeant, you need to delegate. And I'm sorry, if, if you're the chief and there's something. you need to delegate. And I'm sorry, if, if you're the chief, and there's something that you have to take care of, and it's your day off, guess what, we pay you rather well...
Right.
To take care of that stuff, whether, whether it's your day off or not. I mean, if it's two hours of your day off that, that you have to take care of it, that's what we put you in the position to do.
Right, and which, you know, I, I'd made that clear to, to people before and said, your computer that we've got can go home with you, your phone, your cell phone that's paid for, you can make your call at home even, you don't even have to come up to the office, you know, you can do those things, cause you're a salaried individual.
If they can't stand the heat, they better get the hell out of the kitchen.
I was just like, it, it just is what it is.
I expect Jeff, if, if his guys can't do the job, to step up and do the job.
Right.
If they aren't around, or they need his help, whether he's on vacation or not, or, or it's his day off, and I know Jeff does it, when his guys go out, he's right there beside him if he has to be. I expect Jamie to do the same thing. If they don't get something done, you're the supervisor, and if it needs to be done, that's your job.
It gets done.
You're paid to get it done.
Which is a talk they need to be having, chief trying to get hired right there.
Well, that's what I was saying.
So, go on, go on.
But that's what I'm saying, a, a, and I agree, I mean, while we're talking about police department, if we're gonna hire, all supervisors, I think, need to be hired and interviewed by full council.
I agree.
And anybody else you want. Every, every time we've hired anybody, Mark, we done it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think it's right, I think, you know...
I don't have a problem with that. I, I, this is what, that's what, I mean, that's what we did last time.
Right.
You know, that I don't have no problem with. It's what I do for a living, so...
You know, I, I just think there are some changes, but I'm, I would be favorable for three and two part-times if we can find a part-time.
Two part-time?
I'd go three and one.
Three and one?
No.
Here's the thing...
Marshall, I ju, I just went through all this, I asked him, throwing in lunchtime administration training, sick and vacation, I just asked Bill if we can make it work, with three and a part-time, and we can.
Well, you're gonna get overtime and stuff like that when, when, with three men.
But, but what you need to understand is, at some point in time, if you spend eleven thousand dollars like we did in overtime last year, you've paid for that other part-time person.
Not, not, if you figure benefits.
You don't pay benefits to a part-time.
I know you don't pay benefits part-time.
That's what I'm saying, if you allow three and two part-time people, you don't necessarily have to worry that much about the overtime. You're gonna pay overtime, I don't care what it is, you're still gonna pay overtime in a year.
Your benefit package hiring the, the, extra people costs a lot of money.
That's what I'm saying.
Part-time, I understand where you're...
That's why I said, three people and, and allow up to two part-time people. I don't know whether we can hire two part-time people.
I don't know if we can hire three full-time.
Well, I don't know.
Got two right there.
But, that's what I'm saying, I just feel that with our budget, it is better with three and give them the option for another part-time.
I think, I think you need to have the people available.
I'm not gonna arm wrestle you on this point.
When you look at the overtime that Bill's...
Ryan, what do you think?
You know, I, I hear what Bill says, you know, after, you know, the, have one part-time officer, I don't know.
That's what I told you, I was gonna put you on the spot here, cause there are these things to consider, guys, I mean, cause I've, I've been doing a schedule...
You know, you know your schedule more than I do.
I've been trying to do the schedule, but I quite isn't quite aware of what, where your guys' coverage has been. My biggest fear of hiring two part-time on top of the three full-time is that those two part-time are gonna end up having twenty-five or thirty hours of part-time work. That's my biggest fears, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want those guys to do that much.
Just cause you hired two, two part-time people don't mean you put them on the schedule.
I understand that, but what, that's what happens, your whole budget screwed up again.
You know, something we have to keep in mind a little bit is, is Octavia maybe going to schooling in August.
And is military.
Yep, and military.
So, you know...
He's, he's in April, he's, he's to be called to England for two weeks, so...
Oh.
Possible to plan in October to, I guess, mention, so...
I'm perfectly fine with it, and that's why I said...
Seeing downtown Cabo.
Three and two part-time, you gotta have that, that extra backup.
You have to have the availability, not necessarily use it, but have the availability to call on them if you need them, just in this instance over here.
Right.
Again, you know, when I see Bill with fifty-seven hours of overtime from one-one to three-five, um, you know, overtime's great, yeah, they're gonna have overtime when they get called out on their four hours on, on call.
Or if you're covering a shift or something else, whatever it may be.
But, I don't want them burnout and rundown, because it's a stressful, the moment they put their clothes on, their gun on, they're in a stressful situation regardless of whether it's Podunk, St. John, Kansas, or Wichita, Kansas, and I don't want them in the burnout stage, I don't. I know the statistics on it, I've got two family members in law enforcement that pull twelve-hour shifts, and it's hard, and it's on the street, twelve-hour shifts, and rotating three months at a time, and it's hard on them. And, uh, you know, they said, any more than that, and it gets dangerous, and I don't want that liability for the city either. So, whether we have the crime rate, whether we have the, the need, again, if you want an effective department, I think, again, you have to look at having the availability to cover the time off that you need to cover time off, um, if you want the people on the street. And people, our people want people on the street, maybe not twenty-four-seven, but that availability if we need them. So, I mean, I, I think those are, there are more factors than just, you know, what we've been talking about.
I don't think we need two out of part-time officers and three full-time.
So, the consensus up there's...
Well, there's your three votes.
So, are you good with that, Mark?
I'm fine with that. I'm okay with that three, three full-time and two part-time, with potential, excuse me, potential for a second part-timer, I'm okay with that. As long as it gets these guys, you know, the time off that they need for family, training, and whatever, I'm all for it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine by me, I mean, can you make three and two work?
Sure we can.
Well, you can make the three and one work, if you need two, you could probably make work.
I've been making three and one work.
The thing about it, and I do know that the sheriff's department can cover in instances, they have.
And they, they helped us out a lot.
They helped us out during, the time when you were by yourself, so, I mean, yeah.
I had an opportunity to speak with the sheriff today, and he said, whatever you guys need, you know, we can help it out here and there when we can, so, we just gotta have good communication.
I, I would.
Do I have a consensus for three-two?
Yep.
I need a head nod, or am I gonna have to ask for a vote?
Yes.
I've got three yeses.
That's a consensus.
I want a unanimous consensus. If I'm not gonna get it, I wanna vote.
Well, it's still gonna be four and one.
Entertain, entertain a motion for three full-time and two part-time officers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five oh.
Something else on this study, I noticed...
Five one, four one.
Oh, four one, excuse me. I thought you were starting up, you were waiting for the note, four one, Dorn.
No, I just couldn't wait to vote no.
Gotcha, that's perfect.
It says on this, on the, from this consultant, it also says, the governing body member should express their beliefs at the public meeting, and once the vote is taken, all governing body members should respect the majority decision.
Yes.
That's true with any decision, not of a governing body.
Something we need to be a little bit more professional on.
Right. When we make a decision, we own it, everybody does going forward, because the board has spoken, whether you disagree, agree, or have your differences, because if you maybe disagree, the next time there's a vote, you, someone might be disagreeing with you, and then you've gotta, you know, so...
We're not all gonna agree.
No.
You just take it and go on.
That's fine, but you don't continue to beat a dead horse.
What I'm saying is, there's no other discussion after a decision is made, and you're not gonna shove it down someone's throat when you don't agree with somebody.
Right, fair enough.
While we're on the topic of the police department, I would like to go ahead and advertise for a chief's position.
Right, that's what I was gonna ask. Counsel okay with putting out the posting for a chief of police?
Yep.
Okay, Jamie?
Whether you do it wherever you guys do it, social media, whatever, get with Bill, I mean, whatever you guys put in papers, I don't care. And the part-time as well.
Okay.
Chief and part-time?
Thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion that needed to be had? Okay, moving on to the executive session list. Uh, we're gonna move to the three-minute executive session to discuss attorney clinic privilege, do you still need that?
Yeah.
Okay, to include?
Clerk, counsel, mayor, attorney.
Okay, to reconvene at eight forty-two. Any other discussion?
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's five oh, we'll reconvene at eight forty-two. Call meeting back to order at eight forty-two.
I know, and I gotta come back in here in the morning.
And no action being taken at this time. I would then move in, Jeff, do you still need your session?
Just five minutes, please.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to recess into executive session for possible employment for Jeff's department to include mayor, counsel, attorney.
Mayor, counsel, Jamie, attorney, myself.
Okay, we're to reconvene at eight forty-eight.
So moved to second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's five oh, meeting will reconvene at eight forty-eight. Call the meeting back to order at eight forty-eight.
I would make the motion to hire Melman Hollingback as part-time at sixteen seventy-three an hour.
To be paid out of wa, or out of life?
Out of the election department. Second.
With the start date of?
Jeff, did you know when his sixty?
Sometime in the next week or two, you know, I don't know.
April?
April one.
April one?
That's up to you guys, if you wanna wait until April first.
With the start date of April first.
I'll tell him that.
Motion?
With the understanding...
With the understanding that if we hire full-time, that employment could be, the part-time could be eliminated.
Yes.
Okay.
That needs to be made aware to him.
I'll tell him, yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, Sanders and Bryant, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's five oh.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Okay, moving down, moving down the list.
Hi, just to be safe, three went by real quick.
Okay, all right, I'd entertain a motion to recess the executive session for five minutes to discuss employee performance for the city clerk's office.
So moved to include?
Oh, well, thank you, good catch. To include mayor, counsel, Jamie, attorney, anybody else?
So moved, second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's five oh, we'll reconvene at eight fifty-six.
He's in there.
Call meeting back to order at eight fifty-six.
I would make a motion to raise Pam Watson's pay from eighteen dollars an hour to twenty dollars an hour, backdated to January one.
Let's have a motion. Motion and a second, Sanders, Christie, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's four one, the CS abstains. And with no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Get one in.
Motion and a second, or the CS, or any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's four one, Sanders, meeting adjourned at eight fifty-seven. Thank you, gentlemen.